...part-time math teacher. Your vacancies opened and I just wanted to step up and offer my time. I have worked in coaching for the staff that I call three and me. I worked with the staff of sixteen. And no matter how big the staff was or how many people were involved in my program, my dress was twenty-two and admitted the hundred and sixteen players. But no matter where I worked, it was always Friday night. The fans were with you if you won or if you tied, just don't lose. And, you know, I'm with the winner tie. My offer to the council is simply this, I've listened to a lot of complaints. My son's the best in the world, my daughter hates math. I can listen, I can reason, I can sit beside you and ask questions. I'm very proud of what's going on at Albemarle at the moment. You know, I continue to volunteer through the rec department. I do a lot of umpiring refereeing and the school systems as well. But when I look at Albemarle, I see envisioned Albemarle. I know you have the comprehensive land program coming up, meetings. The downtown catalyst is a big program. They use that in my hometown of Warren, they took Miles Hardware that was open in 1906 and it's been a restaurant for the last fifty years and it's a vital part of downtown. All of that's important. I appreciate listening on W S B C, you know, to the Thursday edition catching up on the news of Albemarle Monday is Locust and Western Mill, Stanley County news. In my hometown, they called it town talk. Every day at twelve, the radio opens up and people complain. And that's what people do to you, I'm sure instead of the phone ringing, they call the radio station there and complain. At this point, I'm still teaching part-time. I am the host of the Front Porch Bluegrass Show on W S B C, it's also on two stations in Virginia. Nothing else tonight, I got to say my name and talk about bluegrass. But basically, I'm available to help you any way I can, whether I'm chosen to be part of your council or not, just let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Flamingo.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next is Bob Grover.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we know each other pretty well. So I don't know, it would take a lot of time to do that. Kathy and I live at four thirty-four North Tenth Street here in Albemarle and we've been there for a little over, oh, going on two years, I guess. And when I understood that there was going to be a vacancy, I wanted to step up and say that I'd love to be a part of the team that cares about our community and every one of you do and I know that. And so you've read my bios, you've got my history, you know how I've been involved. And so I'd just like to give a few thoughts, won't even take three minutes. First, my desire is like y'all to be part of a solution instead of a problem. And every one of us have that. I've read the strategy, I've read the desires and where we're headed. I'm totally in support with those things. I want to learn more about the leadership here. I want to be part of the leadership because I've done that for all my life, whether it was in sports, playing football in the Big Ten and ended up coaching there in the Big Ten for a while and then going in the Air Force for twenty-plus years and learned a lot there. I love being part of decisions. I love prioritizing things and making things happen for the good of people. One thing I've been learning more and more is we no longer live in just leadership. I taught leadership for over thirty years. John Maxwell and I are good friends. And one of the things I've learned, it's not leadership anymore, there's a leader shift. Leadership is shifting. You've got to be on top of it. Things are moving very quickly. And there are at least eleven major shifts that are happening today, some we know and some we're learning more and more about. One is valuing yesterday but living today. Making things happen today with the understanding where we were is no longer good after four years. You've lost thirty percent of your leadership there. Another is the picture is changing faster and getting bigger and we have to be ever learning. We must be alive today, but think about tomorrow because it's coming quicker than we want to let people know. It's not that we don't care, you got to make decisions on the move. And I think that's what y'all do. I watch you, I've watched the, on TV, the whole process. And we have to move forward courageously. The decisions to be made today require courage. Especially in these uncertain times because we are living in uncertain times. So I hope the council has the opportunity, gives me the opportunity to care for them. I didn't think I could speak three minutes, most preachers can't get it done in thirty minutes, but that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Grover.
Thank you so much, your honor.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Martha Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For those of you who are in attendance of the council chambers or watching the meeting tonight, let me introduce myself. My name is Martha Hughes. I am married, mother of two sons, and have lived in Albemarle for thirty-nine years. I previously served on the Albemarle City Council from December 2013 to November 2022, a total of nine years as an at-large seat. I am proud to have been part of the many projects and accomplishments the council, mayor, and city staff achieved during these years. When council member Chris Whitley announced his resignation, I received several phone calls from local citizens encouraging me to submit my name for consideration. After speaking with family and my employer, I decided to submit a letter of intent. I believe my previous experience on city council provides two key advantages. First, I already understand the functions of this council and the needs of our city staff. I can be an immediate productive partner on day one. I've helped to develop budgets, I've worked to build consensus. I won't need months to learn the process. I understand the amount of time needed to prepare for each council meeting and the planning and time to prepare a yearly budget. There are meetings and yearly gatherings the council attends and I attended those when I was on council and will do so again if selected. Second, and more importantly, I have worked with each current council member and mayor. As a former council member, I understand the need for fiscal responsibility, transparent governance, and the need to work with colleagues to find solutions. Regarding my current involvement with the community, I serve on the tree commission for the city of Albemarle, Stanley County Arts Council, Stanley County Visors Board, and I'm a board member of the Albemarle Rotary Club. My previous service on this council was one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. If selected to fill the current vacancy, my priority for the next year will be to apply that experience to the specific challenges and opportunities that lie ahead, ensuring our city continues to move forward without interruption. I will dedicate my time to serve with the same passion and experience I brought to this position on my prior terms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Martin. Next is David Morgan. Let's test it, Dave, and see if we can hear you.
Honorable Mayor, that work?
Be good.
Honorable Mayor and members of council, Mr. Manager, my name's David Morgan and when I sent in my letter of intent, I sent you a copy of my resume, so I'm not going to rehash all of that with you. My answers to your questions, I'm available to talk with any of you that would like to discuss it more. I've served in local government and nothing is more important than the government that's the closest to the people. One of the things that I thought most important in serving was what you're doing and that's with a strategic plan. I've been a part of two strategic plans and they produced a lot for our county. They were both countywide. The first one brought about the Aggressive Center that had been talked about for years in this county. We got the civic community together and the farming community together and in a four-year period, that project was almost completed, but it was put together in a short time. The next thing that came out of that strategic plan is right here in Albemarle and that's the senior center. We renovated the old armory for the senior center, but that was another product of the strategic plan. I have read yours, I think it's, I think it's great that it's an ongoing process for the city. One of the problems that we had with the two that I've talked about is that those plans, after their intended purpose ended and we did not continue it, or it was not continued. So I would like to serve. If there's anything that I can answer to be a part of the team that would, that would help, I will sure do it. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Victoria Ramos?
Good evening, Mayor, honorable members of Albemarle City Council. I stand before you today, not as a politician, but as a dedicated public servant and a lifelong advocate with commitment to community empowerment has defined my career. My motivation to seek this appointment of District Four is the outgrowth of my life spent in the trenches as a special education teacher in New York City for twenty-five years and as the NGO of a nonprofit founder committed to mentorship and youth development. The background combined with my current work with criminal justice reform as a director of outreach for badges and boxes, and my service as a current board member for the Stanley County Consolidated Human Services Board, gives me a unique lens. I view this appointment as the most direct means to leverage my expertise to positively impact the well-being and the stability of Albemarle residents. Council, my candidacy is fundamentally about strengthening the democracy, democratic principles of this body that is built upon. The majority represents a solid foundation, and I respect that. However, a thriving democracy, one that is fully served, all constituents, requires a diversity of participants at the same table. This is not a matter of politics. It's a matter of practical effective governance. Albemarle is growing and changing. I am proven fact from New York to here. And our leadership must reflect that. The appointment of a person that represents the Black and Brown community is a critical step towards inclusive community engagement, a goal articulated in your own strategic plan. I have a demonstrated ability to bridge gaps, having served as the first Black Secretary of the Stanley County G O P. And I can translate the specific needs and aspiration and marginalize the underrepresented groups in a visible policy, ensuring that every person represented, especially in District Four, feels their voice is heard and truly counted and decisions are being made correctly. If appointed, my top three priorities: Criminal Justice Reform that focuses on juvenile delinquency; Juvenile Crime Prevention Council; Early Intervention and diversionary programs and safety and security; second, Housing, Infrastructure, and Economic Development. They are both intertwined; and Education Accountability to eliminate fraud, waste, and abuse. I am here and ready from day one on budgets and engaging the department heads, demonstrating my commitment of organizational capacity. And in closing, I offer the council a unique blend of devoted service, reluctant board experience, professional background, and advocacy. My name is Victoria Ramos. I am here for District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Thank you.
Scott St. John.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Scott St. John. I'm honored to be considered for appointment to Albemarle City Council. Albemarle is a special place. Our city has made tremendous progress without losing who we are. My family and I are proud to call this city our home. After raising four children here, I see serving on city council as a chance to give back. We can help shape a bright future, not just for my family, but for everyone. For over thirty years, I've dedicated my career to public service, protecting the most vulnerable. Being a guardianship social worker takes creativity, compassion, and commitment. Because of this, I have firsthand understanding of the needs of people from all backgrounds. I've guided families through crisis and solved problems with real-life consequences. This experience can serve our community well. Beyond my professional work, I've always believed in the importance of giving back. Over the years, I've enjoyed volunteering with local nonprofits, supporting schools, and participating in various community events. For the past two years, I've had the privilege of serving on Albemarle's Planning Board. This role is deep in my understanding of the difficult decisions city leaders have to make. As a result of this service, I believe community growth, schools, and roads are some of the most pressing issues in Albemarle. We need responsible, smart growth. We need good jobs and affordable housing for all our residents. We need to collaborate on efforts to improve our schools. This is what makes a thriving community that supports everyone. We must create opportunities to help each person advance and thrive. That's the heart of public service. Balancing economic development while preserving the character of Albemarle requires listening, really listening, to our residents. If appointed, I plan to be accessible and engaged with the people I represent. Their voices are vital to making sound decisions. I'm committed to listening and responding. I will meet with board members, the city manager and staff, to ensure I'm fully informed and able to serve effectively. As you make your decision, I'll leave you with the priorities I would focus on together: Keeping taxes and utility rates affordable through efficient city operations; Ensuring we have smart, responsible growth that meets community needs; And support improved school quality through collaboration. Thank you for your time and consideration. And I look forward to the opportunity to serve with each and every one of you to build an even better Albemarle. And I've got thirteen seconds left.
Thank you, everybody. Thank God. Again, thank you to all of you for coming in tonight for this presentation. Council will take this into consideration, and we will move forward probably in November. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve, to all of you.
Yep, thank you all.
Moving on to administrative reports, your department reports are in your agenda. Questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Order twenty-five forty-one, amending the annual operating budget. This is to allow us to spend the equitable sharing forfeiture funds. You have information in your agenda as to what they're wanting to do.
Move approval, order twenty-five forty-one.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving into new business, Resolution twenty-five twenty-five, support for a building reuse grant application for Project PB Clinic. We will not go into the in-depth about what this is tonight. We are approving a resolution that will allow us to do a public hearing at the November third meeting and go into detail about this project at that time.
Move approval, sir.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. City manager report, Mr. Rhodes.
Okay, I have a few things for council. On Thursday, this coming Thursday, we will have a comprehensive land use plan open house here in council chambers. The first, and it's for all the community and citizenry, the first session will be one o'clock to two thirty P M. The second session will be six o'clock to seven thirty P M. Both sessions are identical, so we are hoping to accommodate as many people as we possibly can to come in and take a look at the draft of the land use plan, make comments, tell us what you like, what you'd like to see maybe revised, and so that we can get the land use plan moving toward the planning board and then ultimately to council. On October thirtieth, we'll have our annual downtown trick-or-treat from five to seven thirty P M. Leaf collection season is off to a good start. And finally, congratulations to the Albemarle Police Department for a successful community night out. We want to thank all of the partners and providers who have helped out with this effort. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Counsel, anything to come for counsel?
Your honor, I just want to say congratulations to our city clerk. It's my understanding she just completed the School of Government Certification Institute. I think that was roughly a hundred and twenty hours. So congratulations, thanks for all you do for us, and that's all I've got.
Mayor, I'd like to mention that the former council member Titus Standback is, has been admitted to V A Hospital in Salisbury. We got the information from his wife, Brenda, and she was pleased that we were going to acknowledge that this evening.
Thank you for letting us know.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Brenner. I'd just also like to congratulate our fire department. I thought they represented the city well during the open house of the, at the North Carolina Emergency Training Center.
Oh, yes.
Last, what, last Wednesday or Thursday?
Tuesday.
Last Tuesday. I get my days mixed up. But anyhow, they've done a good job in their presentation. And also, just as a reminder to the listening audience, this coming Saturday, the Bait and Brews Festival in downtown Albemarle.
Go ahead. No, I'll finish. I'll pick up the evening.
I'd just like to say thank you to each of you for taking the time to submit your letter, to answer your questions, and to take time to come up and meet with us tonight. It's a very good group. We're not in a very envious position, needless to say. But to each of you, thank you very much, and God bless you. We appreciate you.
Thank you. And just to piggyback on that, some of the folks who spoke tonight, and I always feel like I'm sitting down like below the podium, and I am, I guess I need a booster seat, Chris Dan. We do have several committees within the city, and I would offer to anyone, particularly even the folks who would like to be on council, to go online and determine what those committees are. We're always seeking members, and that is the first step in determining what all the city does. So, I mean, we're all the time looking for folks, from rec, Parks and Rec, to planning and zoning, to H P C, to the A B C Authority. I mean, there's all kinds of openings out there. I am delighted that we had as many people who want to give of their time and energy. And one thing that I think I heard, or I perceived that I heard from everyone, is that you're ready to listen. And that's the most important thing that this council does, is to listen and then to make those decisions that are beneficial to all the citizens. Back to something Dexter made, the comment about the emergency training center. For those of you that don't know, the ones that are here and the ones that may be watching, we are actually sitting on a phenomenal gold mine with the emergency training center here. It will, in fact, train folks, not just within our state, but across the United States. The folks that come to work there or come to train there will be staying and staying within the, well, within the county, either the dormitories there on campus or with one of our hotels. But we are sitting on a wonderful opportunity. And just to see those folks in action, Dexter, as the waters just, as the waters opened up and the kayaks came through there doing their demonstration Tuesday, it was absolutely amazing. To my colleagues sitting up on the dais, thank you for giving the water or giving the authority for us to give that initial water for the particular, for the E T C to start that was actually addressed or mentioned that afternoon. And the last thing is, I don't know who was actually behind it at the very end, but I'm so tickled that the C and D trash that was behind the North Street, piece of property on North Street, has been cleaned up. I know that the city ended up doing it, but thank you for making sure that got done.
That was our code enforcement team, is now operating under the police department, and I want to join you in thanking them for their work.
Anything further?
I think that was it.
Anything further to come for counsel? I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until tomorrow night at five P M for a special session in the Ray Allen Room, and this will be to hear from a consultant.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Benton, I need your signature on a piece of paper, please.
All righty.